We've got enough votes to pass the motion, okay. We will go forward and I'm going to turn this over to our city manager. And just so that everybody also understands, you know, we're, everybody is involved in this regardless of whether or not, you know, some, once the local city here has gone forward and declared a state of emergency. We have discussed this, I've discussed it with our city council members, but we do have a city manager who is no stranger to crisis management, having been city manager of Washington, Illinois in late 2013 when they had the tornado hit. So, that plus the fact that our county administrator is a former head of the health department and given her background, I think we have appointed administrators who are really in great, you know, we're in great hands. And I just wanted to preface your remarks, Mr. Gleason, and to thank you for all that you've been doing. And we are certainly trying to do whatever we can to be on top of this, and I appreciate all your efforts. Turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And to the community, I wanted to take this opportunity to provide an update on the ever-changing action that the city's taking in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I've created some talking points. I'm going to try to be brief, but there's a fair amount of information to cover. So, what I would like to do is first share that city staff have been in conversations internally and with our external partners for weeks, prepping for the likelihood of what we are experiencing as a nation, state, region, and this community. Last week, we took the following actions. We canceled programs at the arena and the BCPA, canceled programs for seniors and SOAR, cleaning increased with the facilities department, and also the expectation of employees to maintain their workspaces. Implemented social distancing practices as defined by many of the credible sources. Administrative court was postponed until May. Zoo closing will be on Wednesday, March 18th, which is the day after the primary election because it is held at the zoo. First Friday in downtown Easter events have been canceled. Business travel for employees has been canceled. Established a line item to collect all expenses associated with COVID-19 for the possibility of reimbursement. So if we have staff that are off because of an illness or because of childcare consideration, the increased cost for some of the cleaning supplies, that's something that we're now tracking, you know, in the finance department through a line item that's created just for COVID-19. Boards and commission meetings that can be suspended have been, but this will also follow any changes that the council might adopt in the future. Also stood up a direct link on the city's website to the CDC, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and the McLean County Health Department. Ramp up what a centralized communication strategy would look like internally and externally. All things are vetted through the communications manager, Nora Dukowitz. Considering as many scenarios regarding city employees as possible, the collective bargaining agreements, childcare, caring for other family, a direct exposure, an indirect exposure, work at home or telecommunicating or telecommuting, and so on. I have actually been working since last week, really Jeff Jurgens has been the one that's been running the lead on this. We will have an executive order from the city manager will be finalized tomorrow. And it puts into, well, it formalizes many of the things that I was sharing. And that's a fluid document that's ever-changing as well. Next, considering how do we deliver city services in other ways? Messaging the current online options, actual physical signage, facility closure to limit public access, and so on. Local ongoing discussions with McLean County, the town of Normal, that have ramped up to include the Chamber of Commerce, CDC, and others, and this is at my level. Local ongoing discussions among staff with hospitals, public safety, emergency management, the state's attorney's office, our insurance carriers for things related to our insurance coverage, and others. Other ongoing discussions are following the updates that they're providing with the Illinois Municipal League, the state of Illinois, the President of the United States and his administration. And then also as an alumni for the Center of Homeland Defense and Security, there's an alumni site for a lot of emergency management professionals from around the state, United States are tracking what their best practices are as well. Over the weekend, many of the considerations are turning into reality with the Unit 5, District 87 closures, Governor Fritzker enacting precautionary measures with the implementation of. The city hall and the government center will be closed to the public effective Wednesday, March 18th, the day after the primary, and until May 1st. Look to our city website for instruction on the various services that can be delivered online. We will be suspending, and this is just to name a few, and we'll get that complete list in you guys' hand when we have that. Water shut-offs for any reason, water meter replacement, fine collection, and again, we'll provide updates to follow in the very near future. We'll be providing the following services from the will-call windows at the Grossinger Arena along Madison Street. And then what I'm saying here is while we're closing the facilities, city hall and the government center, the city portion of the government center, we're still going to try to push people to online payment, use the Dropbox, but we know that there's those needs for some individuals to pay in person or to have that direct contact. But also trying to maintain the separation. We've got a will-call window that's on Madison Street at the arena. There's four windows that it's not going to take very much to get those up, and plan on getting that finalized tomorrow in preparation for the Wednesday closure action. So they must still go to that location. We'll have the clerk staff, the water billing staff, to all be in one location. We're going to stand up a covered area and also propane tank for heat, you know, on the exterior if that would be necessary, you know, over the next coming days, but that's what we plan on doing and that'll be effective on Wednesday. Public safety comments will come later in this conversation. Chief Donath is going to go first. Chief Moore will go second. Both of these gentlemen have, well, let me back up and say this a different way. Public safety is one where the exposure, the possibility of exposure is probably far greater for any of our employees. So I want the council to understand that if a crew in the fire department is exposed, what does Chief Moore have in place to deal with that on the police side? Just as one example, if we start losing police officers, what happens with some of the specialty positions? And the patrol is the primary focus if, you know, we get to that point and he's got a plan in place. And that's just one example of some of the things that the chiefs are going to comment to. Legal considerations, I'm going to call up Jeff Jurgens after the fact. He'll talk about what we've prepared as an emergency declaration, also some OMA considerations, and we'll walk through some of the items that he's got prepared to present. Communication. Nora Dukowitz is not here. I tried to eliminate as many staff, but I know she's watching us on the live stream as actually the other directors are required to as well. But Nora is our central point of contact regarding information and communication internally and externally. Am I going to get the gavel?
No.
Okay.
I was wiping it off.
All right. If there was ever a time to over-communicate, if that is possible, with the most up-to-date information that is ever-changing and fluid, it is times like this. Even more critical is controlling the communication so that it is consistent for our community's sake. Respect the fact that media has limits in terms of space in a news article, and maybe time in a radio conversation, and a complete message can be lost. We do not have that challenge and we'll be communicating via our social media sites and our website to complement and complete our local media. So Nora, in her role, truly becomes the, that vetting, that central point. Not necessarily the P I L, you know, because I'm sure you guys are going to have constituents that want to be heard from you as elected officials. I'm just saying Nora is that person that provides the script, if you will. That's up-to-date, provides talking points. And then definitely internally with the staff, it's one where any media outreach or any questions that are being asked of us, it goes through Nora first. She might provide the response, or she might provide the response back to the department director to respond to the media request. So those are a number of things that we're doing internally. Tomorrow, we have a staff meeting that will finalize what's going to appear in my emergency order as the city manager, and that's really the personnel type of stuff that we need to consider as we prepare for what's here today and what's likely to come next. One thing that I've talked about staff, and I'm actually very, I appreciate the comments, Mayor, and I keep touching my face and I shouldn't be, but very much appreciate the comments, but I have been very impressed with the department directors. Like I've said, we've been prepping for this for the last handful of weeks. And, you know, these guys, I'm surrounded by staff that are very much ready for something like this. So it's made it a lot easier on me. So as we progress through this, and we will get to the other side, you know, as a nation, more so as a community, it's just the preparation steps that we've taken up to this point. So definitely pledge to council that we will keep you as up-to-date as we possibly can. Maybe check that city email a little bit more often than you typically do, and if there is something that is urgent, we'll be activating, you know, people to reach out to you guys directly via cell phones. So, real quick, I'm going to read an email that came from the county administrator, Camille Rodriguez. There was a request that she present to council, and I think internally what she was asked to do from the county side was to prepare a memo that I'm about to read. So, going to read that now. Dear City Manager Gleason, and this is again from Camille Rodriguez, the county administrator. Dear City Manager Gleason, I want to share an update regarding McLean County government's planning in response to you, the coronavirus COVID-19. First, there are still no confirmed cases in our area, but we are thinking ahead. For county administration, the last two weeks have been full of meetings with leadership from the courts, sheriff's department, state's attorney and public defender, nursing home, jail, medical, juvenile detention center, and of course, the health department to receive and share the most up-to-date information and federal and state recommendations or requirements regarding information about COVID-19. In addition, last week, we convened an emergency meeting of the McLean County Board to change the location of two polling places located in long-term care facilities. We are reassured by the preparations by the county departments as well as the collective commitment to convene and collaborate with partners like the city of Bloomington, town of Normal, the mayor's association, the township supervisors, the regional office of education, and Advocate Roman and OSF hospitals, as we all navigate this new territory. Health and the public, the people that live with us and our staff is the driving force of our planning and decision-making. We continue to communicate public health updates and any changes in recommendations. Like the hospitals, the department has initiated its emergency operations center. Facilities remain open with some changes in operations. McLean County home visitation is suspended as per federal guidance. Adult detection center visitation is remote video only. Juvenile detention visitation is phone only, and the 11th Judicial Circuit Court issued an administrative order today which continues criminal felonies, abuse, neglect, juvenile delinquency, petitions to rescind, summary suspensions, and any other emergency hearings as they arise, but halts the scheduling of marriages between today and April 12th, with exceptions to those currently scheduled. And all, if you do not have a case in one of these categories, the 11th Judicial Circuit Court, you do not come to court. And, the Public Health Emergency Operations Center constantly pushes out the most up-to-date Illinois Department of Public Health press releases about COVID-19, and our social media feeds remain up-to-date as well. McLean County government will continue to share the most current COVID-19 information as provided by the state and federal authorities, including what people should do if they think they are sick. You can find that information on the McLean County Health Department's website and social media feeds, including Twitter and Facebook. We appreciate the opportunity to share this brief summary of McLean County government's efforts as we protect and promote health. Attached, please find an unexhausted list of community resources to share with all. And that was in the attachment that I sent in the city manager update. I guess a couple of things that as I'm sitting here and before I pass the opportunity to speak to you guys, to the chiefs first, and then to Jeff, you know, some of the things that we've had to consider, we actually had a couple of employees that are returning from Europe. So they've agreed to self-quarantine for 14 days. We have an employee that not a direct contact with a confirmed case in the state of Illinois, but a sibling had the confirmed contact, and then there was a family gathering after the fact. And then we also have an employee that had a direct contact with one of the confirmed cases in the state of Illinois. So it's all these things on the personnel side that we've had to consider, and trying to be ever-conscious of the COVID-19 considerations, and then also the health and safety of the staff to the elect and to the community. So those are some of the reasons that the decision was made, and I see, you know, I shared this decision with the county and with the town, and it appears that some of the other municipalities in the region are going to have facility closures as well. We know that it's important for some residents to have that face-to-face contact, and that's why we feel that we've got a great opportunity with the arena, with the ticket windows that apparently are not used but still intact, and have the phone system and the computer systems that we can use. It just was a perfect fit, to be quite honest. So, that will be effective on Wednesday. Chief Donath, if you would, work your way down to the podium. And I'm going to shut my mic off and let Chief Donath talk, just, you know, there's so much that's occurring, but I wanted him to have some face time where he can talk about what's actually going on within the police department, and then that what-if, you know, because we know that day is likely coming. Chief?
Thank you. So as city manager Gleason indicated, police and fire are in a unique position that we have to maintain. We can't work from home, as many people do, so we're preparing to make sure that we can accomplish that, and through a variety of ways. So, what I've done is I've kind of broken down into a few different subject areas, some of the things that we're doing to try to minimize our exposure and our risk, but still provide services to the city that are necessary. So the first one is a shorter one, but in regards to our building, we are closing off the upstairs area to our building and leaving just the lobby open to the public, which is essentially the only place that they really need to come to. And in conjunction with that, we are closing the Osborne Room for public functions, and we actually started that last week and contacted people that had reservations already to let them know, and we'll continue that. Internally, inside the building, we've stepped up our touchpoint cleanings, including over the weekend, because if you think about if a building is cleaned at these touchpoints on a Friday afternoon, you get Saturday, Sunday, Monday morning, you get two and a half days where that wouldn't necessarily occur, so we're also going to do that over the weekend. So just a couple of notes about the building. In regards to officers, so we have provided the CDC and IDPH recommended protective, personal protective equipment in all of our squad cars. So what does that consist of? It's goggles, it's N95 mask, it's Tyvek suit, and then what's the fourth one I'm forgetting right now? Oh, just gloves, just what we normally wear for gloves. So that's the CDC recommended guidelines for law enforcement as well as the Illinois Department of Public Health. And that will be in all the squad cars, so they have those available. We're starting a protocol to have the officers clean their squad cars before every shift. So first shift, second shift, third shift, they'll be cleaning their squad car. If they transport a person, they'll be cleaning that area. And they will be cleaning shared workstations every time they use them. We're also going to go to a kind of modified approach for minor reports. So in other municipalities, they actually provide online reporting. We don't do it. Normal does, Chicago does, many places do. We're going to have not online reporting, but what we're going to do is we're going to kind of evaluate if somebody says, well, somebody keyed my car, I don't know who it is, there's no evidence, we're going to take that report over the phone. And because we have evidence.com, we can actually send an invite to the person that allows them to share pictures of it, so we can still document that stuff. So we'll be doing that as a way to minimize some of the contact, because again, we need to preserve our officers and their ability to show up for work, so any contact, you know, adds to the possibility that they could become infected. So it's some little things like that we're going to do. We're going to, when it comes to arrest, minor charges, we may not make the arrest and transform to jail. We may do a referral to the state's attorney's office for charges later, as opposed to having all that in-close person contact with the subject and then take them to the jail, and then they have that same situation. We've put all of our non-p patrol sworn personnel on notice that they may be required to handle calls for service in event that a large wave of officers get quarantined. We hope that doesn't occur, but if it does, people like in detective division or places like that that normally don't work patrol or take calls for service, they know that they need to be on the ready. Officers are directed to clean their duty-built equipment if they're in close contact with somebody that's suspected to be positive. We're recommending officers change their uniforms every day. And then we're also recommending the use of the patrol van to transport prisoners that are showing signs of COVID-19. So if there's no signs, they can still transport in a squad car if they need to or want to, but if they've got signs showing that, we want to have a singular vehicle that we utilize for that purpose. We're providing law enforcement-specific documents on how to safe, how to safely be an officer, and these documents are provided by the CDC and the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. And comprehensive email in regards to all this is being sent to the personnel this evening. And then as a follow-up, myself and two of the other assistant chiefs will be attending all of our briefings to answer questions, clarify any concerns they have, so they've got that one-on-one time to know where they stand. For non-s sworn personnel, we're limiting access to the dispatch center to dispatch personnel supervisors, custodians. So no officers in the dispatch center, because obviously they work in an environment where it's a closed environment, nowhere for them to go, they're within, well, they probably aren't quite within six feet of each other, but they're fairly close. We're going to have starting protocol to have the dispatchers clean their workstation at the start of every shift. And then employees that have their own workstations, non-dispatchers, will again, they will do that same task. The community service officers will wear gloves if they have to transfer anything under the window. Thankfully for them, they have that screening window, so the respiratory transfer doesn't occur. Inter-agency-wise, we've shared information with ILEUS, which is the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System. If any requests are required by them, we will actually go through our County Emergency Management Association, which is a little bit different than Normal. And then we're meeting with Normal PD, ISUPD, sheriff's department, and the state's attorney's office on Wednesday. Biocci, which is a software that's used for situations like this, has been set up by Fire Chief Brian Moore, actually months ago, which is great that he already had it in place and we had that opportunity to use that. And we're set up to receive updates from the McLean County Department of Public Health. So, that's just kind of a, you know, an outline a little bit of some of the things that we're doing to try to limit the exposure of officers, but at the same time be able to still do police work and make sure that we're taking care of the business, but balancing those two, those two aspects. Thank you.
Chief Moore? One thing, Leslie, as we're waiting for the chief, the location at the arena, I'm calling it the will-call location, but it's actually the old box office. And we'll have plenty of messaging, you know, on all of our social media sites. We use local media, and we're talking about physical signage so that people know where to go. Chief?
Thank you. So again, like city manager Gleason said, several weeks ago, we began reviewing the McLean County EMS pandemic response plan, as well as previous plans that we had had for situations similar to this, such as H1N1 and Ebola. We have daily meetings with our command staff to discuss the current state of affairs, just to make sure that everybody's up to date on the latest and the movement of the virus, as it's been, you know, moving closer and closer to us.
Hey, chief?
Yes?
I apologize. This is Jamie. Could you make sure that you're speaking into the microphone?
Certainly, thank you. So then, early last week, McLean County EMS activated Level 1 of the pandemic response plan, which again, makes agencies review their plans, make sure that you're looking at your stockpiles of your equipment, your personal protective equipment, your decontamination supplies, and then reviewing the signs and symptoms of the COVID-19. And then on Tuesday, McLean County, or excuse me, Bloomington Dispatch began asking additional questions to certain patients that have call types similar, so anybody experiencing flu symptoms, difficulty breathing, then they're asked several different questions which would help to identify if they are a prime candidate that could be a potential COVID-19 patient. Those patients, then, we increase the PPE that's worn for our staff on those transports. We try to limit the exposure of our staff by having one caregiver come up and approach the patient and ask questions. If the patient does exhibit signs and symptoms of fever, we put a mask on that patient, which again, helps to reduce the spread of that, and really decreases the amount of possibilities of spreading that around, plus it decreases what will need to be cleaned up, right? So, we increased those. On Saturday, McLean County EMS activated Level 2 of that plan, just basically because there were some cases that were identified in central Illinois. So, we're monitoring our stockpiles of our PPE and our decontamination supplies. We have stopped many activities that we would typically be doing and try and really focus on our essential functions. So currently, we're not sending companies out to do pre-plans of buildings, again, trying to limit our exposure. We are not doing hydrant testing currently. Typically, we don't start that till April, but our plan is to hold off on that until this passes. We've stopped giving station tours and are limiting visitor access to the stations. We have canceled student ride-along programs, so we have a lot of students that are precepted by our staff, and that is halted. We're getting a daily summary of patients that warrant that extra question, so we've transported numerous patients that have, you know, flulike symptoms and respiratory or breathing difficulty over the last couple of days, but we're tracking that, watching for upticks in that. We met with union leadership to discuss contingency plans. Obviously, our staffing, just as Chief Donath said, we have a minimum of staffing of 29 currently with our second ambulance that we're putting in headquarters at 31 during peak operational periods. So we need to make sure that we can maintain that staff. A quarantine similar to other departments could be devastating, so we... A quarantine similar to other departments could be devastating. So we met with them to discuss those possibilities and ways that we could deal with that. Just even as close as Rockford, had a quarantine for a few hours of several firefighters. So we're watching that nationally as well. The International Association of Fire Chiefs has a dashboard. They're asking for a daily survey of fire departments to provide information on exposures and quarantines, and we're filling that out. Anyway, we have developed some contingency plans for if we were to have a crew that would be quarantined, how we'd handle those situations on a case-by-case basis. We're looking at balancing our shifts so that we can, just currently, we've had a couple resignations over the last month, which puts us off on one shift compared to the others, so we're going to balance those this week, in an effort to try to just limit the overtime and also spread that overtime out. We've established some quarantine procedures. We're reviewing the CDC and McLean County website on a daily basis for updates. Again, communicating with McLean County EMA, communicate with Normal Fire Department Command Staff on a daily basis. We are also currently working on a plan to set up an alternate response, excuse me, an alternate transport unit, so an ambulance that would be dedicated only to transport a COVID-19 confirmed case. Again, we don't have that situation right now, but in the future, potentially, if we would get someone that is isolated at home and their situation worsens and need to be transported to hospital, we would have a single ambulance that would be dedicated to that, so that we're not continually exposing that to other patients, right? We've met with several stakeholders just to discuss plans as they potentially might close, how that would impact our needs. And so Project Oz is Operation Safe House, where youth can come and have a safe place at the fire station until we can get a counselor there to help them. If they were to close their doors, that could possibly do an uptick. Well, if we're not allowing station visitors, how we handle that situation, how we ask questions before we bring them in, so that we're not contaminating our workspace, isolating them, keeping them separate and comfortable while we're waiting for someone to come get them. We've met with nursing homes to discuss their plans, so we're looking to reduce the impact on them as well. From our office personnel in our administration, looking at ways to decrease impact on them. So on a daily basis, we'll have firefighters come through the administrative offices just to get paperwork, file paperwork, put in requests for turnout, or not turnout, but their uniforms. And we've eliminated that. We're going to keep them in their workspace, separate that workspace. Of course, we've increased our cleaning on a daily basis as well. The firefighters do the cleaning of their stations. They also do clean the administrative offices, and have always done a good job, especially during like flu season. They're well aware, you know, how that impacts us from a staffing need, as we are usually on the front lines of transporting sick patients to the hospital. So with that, you know, they're always cleaning with that intent, but again, now we're cleaning with a heightened level of furnace, so.
Great. Thank you, chief.
Jeff, if you would, work your way to the podium. Jeff has done quite a bit of work, and I wanted to take a couple of minutes for him to walk through the different types of emergencies. You know, one that's been enacted by the president, you know, not an in-depth description, but just trying to differentiate more so for the community, the difference between a national emergency, a state emergency. And then we've prepared the documents for a local emergency if we get to that point. Jeff?
Thank you, City Manager. And as the City Manager said, we just want to go through a couple of the different emergency declarations that I think everybody's probably aware of. As you know, there's been a national emergency declaration by President Trump. That waived certain insurance requirements related to Medicare and Medicaid, also talks about freeing up federal funding for the states to use in response to the crisis, helping with providing tests, medical supplies, that type of thing. Then we've also had the state emergency declaration from Governor Pritzker. That directs state resources to work with the local authorities to develop strategies to address the public health crisis. It also loosens certain procurement rules at the state, prohibits certain price gouging, you know, for the medical supplies, those types of things, and proclaims that state and local resources are not sufficient to respond to the emergency, so it's been requesting that national assistance as part of that. So we've got those two declarations. We have also gotten or received several executive orders from Governor Pritzker. Today, a very important one came down with regard to the Open Meetings Act, that waived certain provisions of it that allows a little bit, or actually a lot more freedom in terms of allowing electronic attendance at our meetings. So that was important to, you know, everybody was scrambling to find out, you know, what's the authority for this going to be. So we now have that clear authority from the governor. We also have directives from the governor, as everybody knows, on the closing of the bars and restaurants. That will happen tonight, the closing of schools and those types of things. The governor has, as everybody knows, been holding press conferences every day. He's also been holding phone conferences. Now it'll go to twice a week where we, as municipal officials, are getting direct updates from the governor's office and from the Department of Public Health. So we have been participating in those conferences as well. At the local level, we also have the ability to declare a local state of emergency. We've got that paperwork prepared in case we get to that point. Really, what that does at the local level is allow certain emergency powers should we need it, you know, the type of things that, you know, one that's being talked about now, some is imposing a curfew. We're clearly not at that point yet, and a lot of our directives have been coming from the state. The state's been taking the lead on a lot of these issues. So, you know, what they've been mandating, obviously, you know, we're following and we're okay with that. So right now, we have the emergency declaration drafted in case we need it, in case the mayor needs to sign it. The mayor can sign that. It'd be effective for 48 hours. He can then renew it for another 48 hours. The next step would be for the city council to pass an ordinance declaring the emergency, and we've got that document drafted as well. So if we get to the point where we need to start perhaps exercising some more emergency powers, we have those documents ready to go. But at this point, our code also allows the city manager to issue executive orders. And our code also sets it up so that the city manager has, you know, various authority and powers to handle a lot of these situations, including emergency purchases. So as the city manager said, we will finalize a COVID-19 executive order from the city manager on internal operations tomorrow. Again, that will address facilities, employee issues, those types of things. So those are the quick updates on the declarations of emergency and the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Mr. Gere.
Yeah. I guess in closing, Mayor, just a couple of additional comments. Definitely we'll keep the elected officials up to date with the information, ever-changing. I think I kicked out three, maybe four, city manager updates today. And that's just the environment that we're in currently. I don't know if we will call this a silver lining, but given the pandemic and the times that we are in, staff know to look for opportunities in all of this as well. Do we address our gasoline contract? It's extremely low right now with some of the stuff that's happened regarding interest rates. You know, so this is not just, you know, the negative side trying to be responsive. The department directors also are taking some opportunity to be proactive and see if there's opportunities out there. That might be hard to believe, but that's the crew that we've got working for us. Appreciate the time, Mayor and Council. Definitely more to come.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for all the department heads and all of our staff for really being on top of this. We very much appreciate it. Moving right along then, under number six, we have presentation discussion of future agenda topics here, and this is presentation and discussion of FY 2021 and FY 2022 resurfacing projects, as requested by the Public Works Department. And we have a 20-minute presentation and up to a 30-minute council discussion this evening, and we're going to go ahead and start. I'll turn it over to, well, I guess, Mr. Cothee, you're already ready. Go ahead, hit it.
Okay. Mayor and council members, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and give a really-
Hold on just a minute, Kevin. Sorry. Interruption. There was no public comment, is what the city clerk wanted me to share with everybody, just to keep things in order. And then real quick, on Kevin's presentation, you know, this is something when we're talking about streets in construction 20, construction 21, because we're talking about a two-year plan. This is something that's been shared with council already in three-on-ones, and I have asked, and we can change this right now. But the original amount of time, I had asked Kevin to shorten the presentation, but, and that's what he's going to do, but obviously, if there are questions, comments, we'll take as long as council wants to. I just want to share that if you're sensing a condensed presentation, it's because I asked him to earlier today. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Yes, so my presentation is a little briefer than we originally planned on, but I did want to address the council. As was said, we've talked about this a little bit in our three-on-one meetings, but there's been, you know, some discussion about what's the budget look like for the proposed construction season this summer. This is the FY 2021 proposed budget for asphalt and concrete, and we have just over $8 million that's programmed in the budget that will be adopted in April. And at the top, you can see the Lutz Road Construction is programmed in there, just under $1 million. And then as we go down the left side, you can see the sidewalk vertical displacement. That's what we call the grinding contract, where we correct vertical displacements with grinding as opposed to having to do full panel replacement. And then the sidewalk and curb ramp program at $1.1 million. And then the emergency multi-year street and alley and sidewalk repairs at $200,000. That's a contract we bid as well that allows us to do some repairs as needed to different streets that we didn't necessarily anticipate. And then payment preservation at $800,000, which that is more than double what we did last year. We did just under $400,000 in payment preservation, and then $5 million in resurfacing. The reason the payment preservation is so important to us is that the cost for payment preservation is usually in the range of, for the reclamite, around a dollar a square yard to about $2.50 a square yard for the more advanced types of payment preservation we do. And that in comparison to the resurfacing, which is in the range of $30 to $45 a square yard, is a dramatic difference in cost. And so payment preservation, and you've heard this before in past years, can do a lot to help us manage our streets more effectively and make taxpayer dollars go much further. Those projects on the left that I mentioned, from Lutz Road all the way down to the emergency multi-year, are out for bid right now. Our intention is to bring that before the council in April and get those ready to go by May 1. And so the payment preservation, as you know, that is being done by just one vendor. And over the last number of years, we've waived bids for that one and negotiated that contract. This year as well, we're going to be talking, we've talked about that for the general resurfacing contract that we want to in the essence of time, and the fact that we, for the last number of years, have only had one bidder for general resurfacing, we'll find it more efficient to negotiate that, to try to gain as many advantages as we can with the contractor in terms of cost efficiencies. So I just wanted, there's a lot of detail I gave you on that slide, but there's a lot to say there. So the streets for two years, 21 and FY 21 and 22, which will be this summer and the following summer, we've changed the color code to make it a little bit easier to see between the two shades of red, sorry about that. And that process to pick these streets, we've talked about this a little bit before. You know, this year, for the first time, we used a software program from Infrastructure Solutions called DOT Decision Optimization Technology. And that was a big learning curve for our staff, and we're still learning as we go with it. But, you know, we still rate our streets based on the Pazer scale of 1 to 10, 10 being the best, 1 being the worst. We put that information into our GIS and then put that into the software. And that software has a number of settings. That includes things like functional class, whether it's an arterial, a collector, a local street, the roadside environment, the different types of surfaces and service type, the ADT, and the Pazer rating system, of course, are the inputs into that. There is no provision in the software up until now to be able to do it by ward. So that was a question about, street selection is done as a entire city. So the software is looking at all the streets that are the cities. We're not considering private streets or state routes, only the streets the city maintains. But as the software makes its recommendation, it's based on the total city. So just to be clear about that. And then, of course, another input to that is the budget constraint. If we say we only have $5 million to work with for resurfacing this year, and actually, what we did was win 5.8, because the software can consider the different types of treatments, whether it's resurfacing, whether it's concrete patching, whether it's the payment preservation, it can consider all those treatments and recommend a treatment, given the current condition and the deterioration curve. So it's trying to optimize the, just trying to pick the right treatment for the right time, is what it's doing. In addition to those constraints, then we also constrain it further by putting in projects that we know are coming up. So for instance, the Locust Colton, the different phases of sewer and water main work on Locust Colton, or water main replacement projects. We, when we know that those are coming up, we put those projects into, and lock them in for a certain year so that the program doesn't try to do a resurfacing the year before we need to do the water main work. So that kind of gets it into the right order. And then with that output, then, staff has reviewed it and tried to do some logical groupings together, again, get cost efficiencies, because we know that our local contractor is more efficient when they have more than one block to do at a time. Their mobilization is costly, so once they're in an area, it makes more sense to keep milling and resurfacing a larger area to gain those cost efficiencies. And so in reviewing that, we grouped some stuff together to make it more cost-effective. One of the things that as we've gone through and reviewed the streets in more detail for, because we still put together plans and specifications that we work with the local contractor to come up with pricing on, we realized that there were some streets in the list that we shared with you before, that where it was recommending for resurfacing, that it would be more cost-effective if we do some other types of pavement preservation to it right now. So we've tweaked that list a little bit. So for the FY 21 for this year, we've looked at changing four of the streets from resurfacing to a pavement preservation category, and we've looked at doing seven streets in 22 for that as well. So this map in the presentation night is slightly different than the one we shared with you before, but what that does is also gives us some opportunities that when we come to you next Monday with the bid waiver, and also to approve the street selection, if you're willing, then staff, as budget allows, could pull streets from the 22, FY 22, into FY 21, and get more done with the dollars we have. And then as we run this process again for next year, for FY 22 and FY 23, we can get more streets pulled into the program sooner than later. So just wanted to give you that kind of overview of what's going on with that. The bid waiver, we talked about this a little bit already, but normally in this process, we normally go out for bid. We put together plans and specifications, go through a bidding process. Bids are opened at a public bid opening, Public Works evaluates the bids, and it comes to you for recommendation. So fairly lengthy process. What we're looking at is the bottom process, which is a little bit more streamlined to be able to work with the contractor and find cost efficiencies that we still have to come to you for the bid waiver, we still have to come to you to approve the contract with that contractor. So that's all part of the process. And then we'll be putting all this information out on the Bloomington Streets website. I think you're all familiar with that. We used it last year for the first time, and we will continue to use it to get this information out to the public as well. So, and this is abbreviated presentation, so I'll open it up to all of you for questions.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Black?
Thank you, and thank you, Kevin. Feels weird talking about this, given everything else that's going on, but important nonetheless. So we've not really had a public discussion around the map you showed earlier for fiscal year 21 and 22. year 21 and 22. Would you mind going back to the slides?
Yeah, absolutely.
And while you're pulling that back up-
Yep.
-I'll just say that in past budget iterations, we've had a lot of success with rolling out the map to the public, getting feedback before we make any adjustments, and I like that you had shown the resurfacing approval process, so if there are desires from the community or questions, we can, there's still time to adapt our policy or our plan for 21 and 22, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Cool. So I'd just say if we sit on this one for a while, this gives folks at home, I know there's a lot of folks listening this evening, the opportunity to take a look at this and mull on it, provide some feedback to us, and we'll be sure to pass that along.
And like I said, we'll be putting this presentation out on the Bloomington Streets website tomorrow.
Councilmember Milowambe?
I think there are a couple who are-
Go ahead.
Sure. So, I know you put up something about sidewalks, and I wanted to know if this was the same as a 50/50 sidewalk program, or are we doing something different?
So this slide that talks about the $1.1 million for the sidewalk and curb ramp replacement program, that's all that rolled in together. So there is a part of that that's allocated for the 50/50 program, there's a part of it that's for the curb ramps, as you know, when we resurface streets, we have to bring any curb ramps into compliance with ADA, and then there's some money in here that just is upgrading the sidewalks along the blocks that we are doing, or addressing complaints from, you know, citizens and so forth. So there's just a lot of need out there, and it seems like a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but the sidewalks are important for the community as well, so.
So how much is allocated to the 50/50 sidewalk program?
You know what, I don't-
Ballpark.
It's around $100,000. I want to say it's $110,000, but don't hold me to it, I, yeah, yeah.
Okay, is it more than previous years, or?
A little bit more, but not a lot more. We, some years, we don't have enough requests from citizens to use all the 50/50 money from that aspect, but, you know, when we talk about the 50/50 program, we're able to leverage additional dollars to get more done type of thing. If there's city dollars left, we go ahead and spend that by the end of the year, but if there's a partnership that we can work to make that money go further, we like to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Imig and then Carillo.
Yes, I just want to reiterate something that we discussed earlier in our three-on-one, and you made a distinction between resurfacing versus preservation, and I just want to make that noted, that what may look like resurfacing to a constituent is actually the preservation process.
Yes.
When a road is in pretty good condition and the preservation extends its life in a cheaper way.
Yes.
And sometimes when people see that happening, they wonder, like, why are you resurfacing this very nicely themed street?
Right, yes.
And I-
No, thank you for pointing it out, yeah.
Yeah, and another thing I appreciate is that while you're using the Paser, Paser?
Yeah, Paser, yeah.
System, you also take into account other factors. In other words, this isn't just that a computer tells you what to do, but you're looking at a more holistic approach to assessing and evaluating the state of the city's streets. And I appreciate that, including waiting if there are projects ready to happen, or packaging, so you're doing a whole bunch of streets at a time. Thank you for adding Clinton to the list, because that is in need, and many of my constituents are really happy about that. And then the only other thing I want to comment on is going forward, I think it's really helpful that there will be an opportunity for the public to have comment. There are a lot of very ancient alleys in my ward, so I appreciate that you're working to find alternatives that are affordable to make those alleys accessible. And finally, when things settle, I will be in touch with you to schedule an appointment to talk about the Brick Streets Plan, so that we can figure out a way to look at how that fits into the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carillo.
I like ancient alleys, I think that's going to be the name of my next band. So, Kevin, thank you so much for your work on this, really appreciate, you know, the transparency and the explanation to how this came together. I want to echo Scott's comments that it would be good to put this out in the public and get some feedback before we move forward on it. I shared with you a question via email, and just out of curiosity, we took the projected costs for each of these projects, and actually Jeff Crable is better at math than I am, and so we just crunched these numbers just to see how they did break down by ward, out of curiosity, and Ward 8, it looked like 26% of the funding over the next two, or the two years that we're talking about, would be spent in Ward 8, and I just am curious, like, so I know that the computer system doesn't decide based on wards, but I'm curious about whether there is something about the projects in that ward that make them more costly, or basically why you think, or maybe we didn't put enough money into them in the past, and this is why we're having to do so much work in Ward 8, but just curious about why that.
Yeah, and I don't have a good answer for that, because, you know, we didn't really, as we prepared this, like I said, we didn't consider the ward boundaries, we just looked at the city as a whole, so why that fell that way, I can't really say.
Is it possible Hershey Road or some of the major arterials?
That can factor in, absolutely can, yeah, because we do have, you know, the bigger roads that, yeah, but, you know, the arterials certainly cost more, and you're right, Mayor, that when you have a four-lane road versus a, you know, residential street, there's more cost.
But I'm glad that you're taking care of Clinton. I can't tell you how many of my faculty colleagues and students and people that I talk to said, it's like a third little country. Not Clinton, the houses, but the street.
Oh, no, right, right, appreciate that.
Well, I've been dodging them in my god knows what number of midlife crisis car I currently have. Anyway, Councilmember Milowambe, oh, I'm sorry, Carillo, Councilmember Carillo, were you finished?
Yeah, I'm good, that was my only question.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Milowambe.
Kevin, you and I in our three-on-one also spoke about the, why the cost of mobilization, right? So could you explain a little bit for the public why it makes more sense? Because for some folks, you know, they might see that, yes, there's actually a cluster of streets in one particular area, but because of mobilization, that's probably the most efficient way for us to do that and get the most bang for our buck. So could you kind of expand on that a little bit?
Yes, the local contractor, when he moves the equipment around, has bigger equipment, it takes semis, low boys to move that equipment, and so the mobilization cost to move an equipment and the crews into place is fairly extensive. Once he has the equipment and the crews in a spot, they can get a lot of work done in a short time, so the more work there is that's contiguous, the more efficient they are, and therefore the better price we get, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you add that number?
How much is the cost generally? I think you gave me a figure.
You know, the, for like the, you know, street resurfacing, a lot of times we figure in the neighborhood of $30 to $45 a square yard for the work in its entirety, but just for, you know, like milling and resurfacing, you know, we could possibly see, you know, 10 to 20% price reductions by grouping stuff together as opposed to having them move all over Bloomington and having to pick up equipment and crews and, you know, even moving a few blocks, they still have to use the, you know, the semis to do that. So anything we can do to group things together just makes them more efficient and more cost-effective.
Actually, just as I'm eyeballing it, I, it seems like it's not just Hershey, but it's-
Stride as well.
Stride, which would be fairly costly, I guess, as well, and it just, the record has nothing to do with the fact I live right near there. And I'm not going to be living there very long, but anyway, but that's interesting. Thank you for kind of doing that kind of analysis. It's important for us to see, us to see, you know, the redistributive effects of policies that we're passing. Any of the, our, Councilmember Crable, Matthew Bray, questions?
This is Kim Bray. No questions, just a thank you to the Director for walking us through this very logical approach, as well as bringing a financially responsible approach to our streets and the request of our many constituents to take care of our streets and sidewalks. So thank you for your talent and the talent of your team in bringing this to us.
Thank you, Councilmember Bray. Councilmember Matthew? Jamie? Okay, Councilmember Crable?
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, this is Jamie.
Oh, oh, there we are. Go ahead, Jamie.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Well, I was going to say pretty much the exact same thing that Kim did, that I appreciate the new methodology that we're using here. It's, we're basically turning this into a math problem, and that makes me happy that there's a logical approach to it.
Great.
So thanks for all the hard work, and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Anything else? Okay, wow.
Okay.
Hard to believe we have silence when we're dealing with streets. Thank you so much, Kevin, appreciate that very much. And since we have had City Manager report, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
I do have a quickie, Mayor and Council, new employees, and we have six new employees, five of them are firefighters, one patrol officer, firefighter Jesse Ellis, Chad Elam, John Henderson III, Michael Mitchell, Kimka, Austin Isham, and Christina, tell me out, Chief. Christina Kerewak, new employees to the city, and wanted to take the opportunity to recognize them. Thank you, that was it.
Great, thank you very much. At this point, we don't have an executive session, correct? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman Milowambe? Is that a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bowlin? Any, well, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Were adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all for participating.